We're good?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I would like to convene the regularly scheduled meeting of the Monrovia City Council. This Tuesday, February 16th, and I do so with my mask on as a reminder to everyone. The numbers are coming down, but that doesn't mean that we don't have to wear masks. So please, 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 um, just put it on, just do it is the, what's that little Nike thing? Just do it. This evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Stephanie Porter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Blackburn. Pastor Porter, thank you for being here with us, and if you'd all please rise.
For the prayer?
Please do. The stage is yours.
Thank you for inviting me into this space tonight. Dear God, we thank you for being present when we call upon you, and I'm reminded of Jeremiah 29:11 that says, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you a hope and a future." And so, Lord, we thank you for your provisions and we trust in your timing. We ask for your wisdom and your discernment to be present in this meeting and in all decision making. Help each person to speak up with boldness and truth, and help each person to share from a place of character and conviction. Please keep each family that is represented in this space tonight safe and healthy, and please provide your wisdom that surpasses our understanding. May you bless them, may you keep them, and may your face shine upon them. We pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Porter. And our Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to get my flag out here, will be given by Councilmember Blackburn.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and lead you in the pledge. Feel free to not chime in along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Blackburn.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll move on to roll call if you would call the roll.
Oh, no, Tom, we have a presentation.
Before roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
That works.
Well, that worked anyway. We have, we have a little special occasion in honor of Tom's birthday. Councilmember Chevlin, do you feel up to your lovely voice singing happy birthday?
Oh, of, of course. All right. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Mayor Tom, happy birthday to you and many more.
Thank you Becky, and I think I heard Alex in the background. It was almost like a duet. Thank you all very much.
I think that might have been Craig. Was that Craig singing? Or was it Alex?
Craig was singing.
Okay, some? Who was it?
I'm happy to say, I'm happy to say credit for it.
If it was in tune, it was me. If not, it was Alex.
Thank you all. Another Year Older, what's that song? Another Year Older and Deeper in Death? Okay, Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers, crudging, ah, sorry, let's start that over. Councilmembers Blackburn?
Here.
Chevlin?
Here.
Spicer? Mary, you're, there you go.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crujington?
Here.
And Mayor Adams.
Here, thank you so much. We had no closed session. Our presentation PR1 is canceled for this evening. Seemingly, the Pasadena Humane Society is running short on pets, which is a good sign. So we have no pet of the month this evening. Do we have our student government representative, Sophia with us? Do not see her here.
She, um, she's here. I think Lauren's about to let her into the meeting. Sorry for that. This flew by very quickly.
There you are. Sophia, how are you?
Hi, I'm good.
Welcome. We're so glad to have you back.
I'm glad to be back.
So what's going on with our schools?
All right, so on the subject of going back to physical learning or moving to a hybrid schedule, our ASB Leadership Class met up with the school board to give them a student's point of view and to voice our concerns regarding making changes to online learning. And since then, the surveys have come out asking students if it would be beneficial to have longer classes or more classes in a day, or if it's best to not change the schedule at all. And the conclusion we reached was that the best option for our students is to keep the schedule as is, although this is not final since it's ultimately the school board's decision on whether or not the schedule remains. Yet we still await a safe return to our school. We are continuing to celebrate our amazing students and teachers who are working hard every day. Last week, we had our first official senior event, which was a scavenger hunt where three prizes were hidden around our city, and the seniors would tune into our Instagram for clues. It was pretty successful, and we plan on doing more of these socially distanced activities in the future. A new club has been on the rise. It's called Healing Connections, and I'm happy to say that I'm a part of it. Healing Connections is a club that is trying to eliminate the stigma behind mental health, and it's just a safe space to talk amongst your fellow peers. We have a group norm of confidentiality, so whatever is talked about in the club stays in the club. It has definitely helped me a ton, so I encourage other students to join as well. And lastly, ASB Leadership is teaming up with the American Red Cross to host an off-site blood drive on Tuesday, March 9th, from 12 noon to 6:00 PM in the living spaces parking lot on Mayflower and Huntington. There is a severe blood shortage throughout Southern California, and we can all do our part to help. Signups have now opened and to reserve your spot, you can go to redcrossblood.org. And that concludes my report.
Sophia, I understand the superintendent has announced her retirement?
Yes.
And any word on what the school board will be doing as far as a recruitment?
Um, I think, I'm not sure. We haven't talked since then, but I think they have a new replacement, but I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
All righty. Well, we appreciate you being here. Hope you're staying well. Any questions for Sophia? Well, thank you. We appreciate you, you being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar and I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving second, is any discussion? Any objection? Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes.
Chevlin?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crujington?
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you so much. We'll now move on to public input, and I understand we have, I think, four pieces of public input to be read this evening.
We, um, we do have four that came in before 5:00 PM, and then we have a couple more that straggled in afterwards, so they're not yet emailed to you and posted, but I'll go ahead and share those also.
Good, thank you.
Sure. So beginning with Diane Scroggins, she says, "I'm very concerned that masks aren't required and worn in Monrovia. I hope at the next council meeting this can be addressed." From Sean Spencer, "Good evening, Mayor Adams, Mayor Protem Crujington, and council members. On Monday evening, some friends and I were sitting at a table on the sidewalk outside a local restaurant on Myrtle. A car turned into a parking spot at such a high speed that everyone at our table jumped up. There was a scream from our table as well as the neighboring table. Luckily, the car stopped in time and the young ladies were very apologetic. Since the pandemic has allowed proceeding closer to the curb, there have been a lot of close calls. I have noticed people driving at higher than intelligent speeds and making very fast U-turns into parking spaces. The U-turns are especially dangerous if someone is in the neighboring spot and trying to enter or exit their car. My hope is that the council can review the current speed limit and discuss lowering it while the current outdoor dining model is in effect. I will also take this opportunity to request that street signage is added to reinforce U-turns are prohibited. Thank you for your consideration." Next, we have from Sari Canalis of the Chamber of Commerce. She notes six new members for February 2020, actually February 2021. Swaven Remodel Inc., VFW Post 2070 Monrovia, Mi Havana Cigars, Overton Moore Properties, Henderson's Uniforms, and Monrovia Tech Support. Operation Save Our Restaurants from 12/18 to 1/31 of 2021. Over 2,000 people signed up for the coupon and 1,403 redeemed their coupons. We welcome back Let's Eat program from February 4th to the 15th. 1,097 people signed up for the coupon and 121 redeemed coupons with six out of 22 restaurants reporting so far. The next Lunch Mob is at Poki Bar Networking via Zoom at 12 noon, and Afternoon Connect is this Thursday at 12 noon. From Melissa Taylor, "Good evening, Mayor Adams and council members. I'm delighted to hear that LA County COVID numbers are going down. While this is good news, there is still risk for those who have not been vaccinated. I'm writing tonight to request that the city enforce a mask mandate. I'm relieved on behalf of the business owners for the opportunity to open up again. While this great, while this is great news for our economy, I don't want, I don't think we want Monrovia to be the epicenter for another surge. See Myrtle Street the past few days, I have seen crowded restaurants and crowded tables. Just yesterday, it was 3:30 PM, and I noticed a line out of most restaurants and people not socially distanced. At minimum, if we enforced a mask mandate, we could slow the spread. As anyone who has had COVID knows, this is a terrible disease, and the risk of catching it can be minimized by enforcing proper safety precautions. Thank you." Then we have from Casey Carlson, "I would like to express my desire for the council to pass a mask ordinance in Monrovia. This will show that Monrovia cares about our vulnerable populations and can help support their local economy while also being responsible. An argument I've heard against passing this ordinance in the past is that our officers do not have the time or the resources to enforce this. You are absolutely right, our officers do not have this kind of time. However, you will notice that in other cities with mask ordinances, there are not roving packs of officers ticketing people for being maskless. Just like it is illegal to be on the phone while driving, you don't see officers pulling people over just for that offense. The only way to help us get back to normal is by stopping the spread, which means wearing a mask." And lastly, from Brian Tindall, he says, "I would like to ask the city to implement some sort of mask ordinance. Masks have been proven to reduce the transmission of the COVID virus, but some people are not, are still not wearing them. The city has given away free masks and asked on social media, but people still won't follow the rules. It may be that the only way to control the spread, get our lives and our city back to normal is to force people to wear masks. I don't have a perfect solution for this problem. All I know is that if more than 3,000 Monrovia residents have caught this and 61 have died, something needs to be done. Solutions are coming at the national level, but it is still up to all of us to slow the spread and wear masks when in public. Glendale and Doherty both have city mask orders. Maybe we can learn what they've done and use that for a program here in the city. Maybe we could have an officer out in Old Town on Friday nights. Thank you for your time. Hope you all stay healthy." And that concludes public input.
Thank you, Alice. And I think, you know, I, I try to open all our meetings with a mask on because I do believe in masks. Enforcement is an entirely different subject matter, and I think if there's no objection, I'd like to ask the city manager to bring us back a report of what it would cost because we all know enforcement isn't free. So a detail of what it will do, take to pass the ordinance, when that could be effective, and how many people would we need to hire to enforce it? Because any law without enforcement doesn't really have a whole lot of value. So if we could take a look at that, I think it would be highly beneficial. Okay, any questions for Alice? Thank you, Alice, appreciate it. Okay, we'll now move on to public hearings, and PH1 is historic landmark 158 and a Mills Act contract for the property at 141 North Magnolia. And John Mayer, our senior planner, will give us the staff report. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, and good evening, and good evening to the city council. On January 13th of this year, the property owners, Brian Dorsey and Heather Huggins, submitted an application for landmark status of their home and a Mills Act contract. This one and a half story craftsman home is considered one of the city's potential historic landmarks. It was placed on a list of properties that the city-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if anyone else is having, um, it's really, really, the, the audio on it is really rough and very scratchy. Is anyone else having a problem?
Me.
Is it just on, just on John's microphone?
Yes, yes.
Just a moment.
It's almost like he's too close to-
It's on Dylan's too.
It's on Dylan's too.
It's on Dylan's too. It's on, even a little on yours, Alice.
But John's is really scratchy.
Does this one sound better?
No.
No, that's worse.
Sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay? Took the mask off? Does that sound better?
Much better. A lot better.
Okay, very good, Alice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. I want you to hear me. Okay, just going back, this one and a half story craftsman bungalow is considered one of the city's potential historic landmarks. It was placed on a list of properties that the city council wanted to see encouraged for restoration and preservation in 1995. The current owners are here requesting formal landmark designation for this property. On January 27th, 2021, Historic Preservation Commission determined that this property merits historic landmark status and forwarded its recommendations to the city council. In order to become a landmark in the city, there are seven criteria that you can choose from, and the strongest criterion in this case is its architecture, its craftsman architecture in terms of style, type, period, design, materials, detail, and craftsmanship. It checks all of those boxes. It was also built during the era of significance for the, for the craftsman architectural style in Monrovia, which was very popular in the city and in the region. This one was built in 1912, and it was originally located in Pasadena. This house was moved here to Monrovia sometime around 1920, and, and, and a few years later, a second story was, was added on to the top of that. This, these are some photos of the house showing the craftsman features. It, like I said, checks all the boxes for a craftsman house, those wide overhanging eaves and low pitched gable roof lines. And some of the very special, unique, character-defining features of this home include that extensive use of filled stone on the chimney and the porch, its exposed rafter tails, and it has all of its original windows and wood shingle siding. We're also very fortunate to have some historic photos of this house. The first two from 1920 and 1922 were submitted by the property owners. It came with the house, gift with purchase, I guess, and it shows us what this house looked like back in the day. We, we learned that it was a one-story house, and then two years later, a second story was added. And as you can see, there had been no major changes in nearly 100 years of this house. It's pretty much been the same, and all the rest of these photos were thanks to Monrovia Legacy and their online collection of photos. The first two pictures, though, show the one-story and two-story, and I just want to point out that since the second-story addition was built within that era of significance of the craftsman's style, it's very much in keeping with, with the craftsman look. In fact, this type of second-story addition is, is what's known as an airplane bungalow. It was very popular, second-story additions for craftsman homes back in that time. The applicant is also asking for a Mills Act contract, which would help with some repairs around the house. There are some broken panes of glass that the owner's wanting to fix, wanting to make some driveway repairs and putting some, some, some permeable surface in the middle of that driveway there. And they also have some French doors that they would like to open someday. That Mills Act would help with that, and also with their seismic retrofit of the building within 10 years. So with that, staff is recommending that the council uphold the Preservation Commission's recommendation of, of landmarking this. This would be the 158th landmark in the city and also a Mills Act contract with the property owners. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council.
Any questions of staff?
Just a comment, what a lovely home.
It is. Beautiful. Thank you, good report. We will, um, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing, and I'll ask the city clerk if we have any correspondence on this.
I did not receive any comments, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Um, not of Mr. Mayor, but I know that this, I, I mean, the concept or the, the land, landmarking and the Mills Act information was going to be coming back to us in a meeting.
Correct. It'll, it'll be scheduled as a study session on your next, next night of council meeting, so March 2nd, about 6:30 PM is, we'll do a study session on historic preservation program.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if we have no comments from the public, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-13.
And I'm delighted to second it.
Great, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn?
No.
Chevlin?
Yes.
Spicer?
With pleasure.
Mayor Protem Crujington?
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to reports of city manager and staff on our city council directives. Mr. Feek, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned just a moment ago, at our, at your next council meeting, we'll talk historic preservation, so 6:30 PM that night, and we're excited to go. Also, Tina, as well as the new liaison to the Old Town Advisory Board, Gloria, held a meeting with Motab to talk about membership, board membership moving from five to seven, and so we'll be bringing that item back to council at an upcoming meeting. A couple other items that I would like to make you aware of that are going to be future follow-up items of importance. One, today, we released the request for proposal for design services for Lucinda Garcia Park. So we're very excited. We've received a just shy of a million dollars of grants to help us retrofit and renovate that park, so we're very excited, and we look forward to public participation as we design the park. So what's important is we get a, someone on board to help us take the concept renderings and, and be able to take resident feedback and engagement and really design the park the way, you know, people want to see it. So we're, we're looking forward to starting the process this year. As mentioned earlier from Sophia, we have a couple updates related to schools this week, starting late last week as well as continuing this week. Schools across LA County, across the state are looking at reopening plans. We expect there to be a lot more discussion at the school board level on what their, you know, what, what happens. A lot of people are asking, but it's really a very local decision, and a lot of school districts are making sure that they have safeguards in place and ways to protect their teachers and school staff as well as kids. So very, very complicated and a lot of work going into reopening the schools, whether they do or not. And the, the county health department is putting a lot of specific requirements on schools if they are going to open, just like they have on the city all along. So, you know, on behalf of, you know, the community, as we provide these updates, you know, we just ask people to be patient because it takes a lot of planning and, and work to be able to get to, do, you know, to reopen safely. One item that I'll just briefly mention, Gloria, and please feel free to elaborate during your council report, but there is some new proposed legislation, Assembly Bill 377, which could very well have a significant impact on cities up and down the state. And so Gloria, I'll leave it to you to share any information that you would like, but we'll expect to bring an item back to council, asking for the city council's formal, in this case, recommendation that we oppose Assembly Bill 377. We'll talk a little bit about why later, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware. And then the last item I'd like to give you a quick update on is Monrovia Renewal. In the next three to four weeks, we're going to see a lot of grinding, a lot of paving, a lot of asphalt work going on in the city, so we're very excited to be wrapping up the, the final part of the project, which is the street work. So residents are going to see a lot of, lot of dust and a lot of work in these next several weeks, so we're excited about that. Once Monrovia Renewal wraps up, we're already thinking about what's next in terms of our infrastructure plans. At the state of the city, council spoke about several different projects that we have on, on Huntington Drive. We have monument signage as well. We have a lot of other miscellaneous projects going on, but we're also thinking, you know, next step, years down the road, what kind of, what kind of efforts are we going to be undertaking? So this year, in the budget process, which is right around the corner, we will be, you know, talking a little bit more about the entire capital project list for these next several years and, and what's to come. So I just want to make sure that, you know, residents are aware as council starts deciding how we're going to invest in our infrastructure. You know, they'll certainly be invited to, to talk and share ideas and share concerns. That way, we can build, build them, you know, build projects into the plan, so to speak. So that's my update for this evening.
Thank you, Dylan. Any questions of Dylan?
There was, Dylan, you and I spoke right before the, the meeting about the, did I miss something in when you were talking, and, and I'm sorry if I was distracted about timelines?
Well, well, the, what I can say about timelines for, for, Becky and I spoke a little bit before the meeting just about capital project timelines. As we, as we finish up renewal, expect three to four weeks for this last bit of paving, weather pending, assuming we have no other, you know, unforeseen issues, but we'll be wrapping up the renewal project here in the next month or so. And then as we, as we move forward, we have projects on the, on the radar that are going to be taking place this summer, but we're going to be planning future projects, everything from design and planning to, you know, starting work on the next round of street and sidewalks and water and sewer. You know, there's a lot of, of questions that come up all the time, from crosswalks and new streetlights and new signage and, you know, a little bit of everything, new parks. It's, you know, we're really trying to manage and, and probably starting out, maintain what we have, what we already have, but then also, where can we make improvements? And so, you know, that, that's, that's a process that residents are going to be able to participate in as we move into the summer.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Dylan? Okay, we'll move on to RCM2, and we're going to get a library update. Carrie Vance, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Oh, well, I'm still excited to share library services with you.
Well, we're glad you're here.
So just to start out, as you know, the city takes the safety of staff and the community very seriously. Since this started with the closures, when staff are on site every day, we do temperature checks and COVID screenings. We offer PPE for staff, including masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, lots of cleaning supplies to wipe down workstations, return materials, whatnot. We also have physical distancing for staff, so we have staggered schedules so that we only have a limited number of staff on site each day. This allows us to hit a 25% capacity within our workroom and also make sure that no one is sitting too close and we're able to physically distance safely throughout the day while we're doing our duties. Returned materials are quarantined for five days, and this is based on national research on how long COVID has been found to last on materials, like library materials, plastic, cardboard, books and whatnot. to last on materials, like library materials, plastic, cardboard, um, books and whatnot. We also installed glass shields in November at all of our service desks, the public computer stations and in the Friends Store, which you can see here. It's a little hard because they are glass, but I promise they are there and they are very effective. We also started offering curbside pickup in July. Um, we have, so people have borrowed just over 24,000 items since we launched in July, and this is a very easy service. We've had nothing but positive feedback from the community about it. It's contactless, it's completely safe, and we have assisted over 7,000 patrons with curbside and issued 342 e-cards, which anyone can sign up for. They just go to the library, uh, catalog and they can sign up and within a few hours, you have a library card where you can check out materials, check out ebooks, anything you would like. And we also have been offering digital resources 24/7 to our community. Um, our catalog has been searched nearly 64,000 times since closures began. We've, um, our patrons have borrowed almost 17,000 ebooks and our e-resources have been used 8,863 times. We have some wonderful e-resources available for our community. Help Now actually offers live online tutoring for K through 12 and college students. It is with, um, professional tutors and teachers across the country. It's in a variety of subjects and it's offered in both English and Spanish. We have Job Now and Vet Now, which are career resource site with live resume and interviewing skill support, and it also provides support for veterans and their specific needs and benefit issues or questions they may have. We have Tumble Books, which is an interactive ebooks for kids and teens, and it's really wonderful. It reads along books with kids. It, um, ha- has books available in other languages. It's a wonderful resource. And then of course we have the Monrovia Legacy Project Online Collection, which has local history photos and books and documents that have been very popular. Our literacy and veteran services have continued virtually since the closures began. Um, we can feel it's very important to continue to support our veterans and our adult learners in our community. We've offered 222 virtual programs for our adult literacy program with over 1,200 participants, and our literacy volunteers since day one have been so ready and willing to learn what they need to learn to be able to continue doing virtual tutoring and training. They've provided almost 1,300 volunteer hours. And then for our veterans, Mabel Cross, who is our, uh, Veterans Librarian, she has worked with the Veterans Resource Center volunteers. They have provided support in 31 virtual veteran interactions and they participate in 133 remote trainings and webinars, keeping up their skills to make sure they're able to support our community's veterans. And then our virtual programming, which is incredibly popular, nearly 31,000 views since we started in mid-March. Um, our librarians have done everything from storytime to craft to book clubs to science and STEM videos, science experiments. We have loaded them on social media and YouTube. It's very popular. It's a wonderful way for our patrons to continue to see their very favorite librarians, um, even while we're all staying safe at home. And this holiday season, we took our holiday programs online. Um, we offered the annual Holiday Sounds Concert via Zoom. We did a Santa Storytime and a Live Mrs. Claus Zoom Storytime that the kids absolutely loved. Um, and we also did a Noon Year's Eve Storytime for kids who may not be able to stay up till midnight. Um, with those four holiday programs, we had 286 attendees and we plan on doing more live storytimes in, in the future. And then we also partnered with Recreation on their comfy camping program that they did in the summer, their spectacular Halloween program in the fall and their winter wonderland. Just a few months ago, we did a total of 18 storytimes that were watched 740 times and we plan on partnering with them in the future. These are really great programs. And then finally, I just wanted to let you guys know about some of our upcoming virtual programs. We have Storytime on Mondays and Fridays on YouTube at 11. Craft Corner and Science at Home are alternating Wednesdays at 11 on YouTube. We have Live Virtual Reference every Saturday at 2 on Zoom, and the Teen Advisory Board has continued to meet virtually on Zoom the first Monday of every month. Um, and then we also have Instagram Trivia the first Friday of the month. And then some of our special events coming up are Zoom Club for Kids. Um, it'll be once a month, and this is actually just kind of a socializing hour for kids to be able to meet others outside their class, outside their school. It's for first through kindergarten, I mean, first through fifth grade, and it's just a really nice, relaxed way for kids to be able to interact with one another and socialize in a way that maybe they're not getting a chance to right now. Um, we also have digital storytelling workshops coming up for adults in March and April, and we have partnered with the Story Center on these workshops, and they'll be just a wonderful way for people to kind of work through some of the things maybe they've gone through over the past year and share with one another. And then we also have the Book to Action Grant coming up in April, and this year's theme is sustainability. So we will be working with Canyon Park on the Bobcat Fire and talking about how resilient our community is, talking with local experts, um, doing fun programming like compost bins or doing virtual film screenings for it. And it'll start on Earth Day, April 21st. So we're very excited for these programs. I hope you guys will attend and share this information with anyone and everyone you know. So thank you so much. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is spectacular. Um, are, are all of these activities listed on our website?
Yes, they're on the library events calendar, um, which you can find either through the city website or going directly to our events calendar through our catalog.
Great. Um, I'm signing up for Storytime on Mondays and Fridays. So I want, after listening to the news and the body count on COVID deaths in the United States, I want to spend some time with that librarian, with the lamb puppet.
Absolutely.
The, the storytimes really are really great, and I know Annette has helped to Monrovia Reads do their storytimes as well. And I wanted to ask you, Carrie, do the, is the, uh, library postings, do those include the Monrovia Reads storytimes?
Um, we do actually have a link. We have a special page on the library website for the Monrovia Reads van, and we have a link to all of the storytimes that Monrovia Reads did for their Read Across Monrovia.
There, some of them are, they're just really great to listen to some of these, uh, stories being read, and I had the great opportunity to ju- re- just recently film on a bad case of stripes. So it was fun, but you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Well, we certainly do appreciate the report back. Any other questions for Carrie? Well, you know, once again, it's, uh, when life hinges lemons, how do you make lemonade? And the, the folks over at the library are doing a great job. We appreciate it very much.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Carrie, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Okay, we will now move on to, uh, reports of city council members, and we'll start with Mayor Protem Crudgington.
Thank you. Uh, just a very short one for me. Um, I talked to Dylan about AB 377. We hadn't gotten it on the agenda. It sort of just popped up, and we'll put it on the next agenda. I don't think I'll be called upon or nor will Becky to take a vote on it before our meeting on March 2nd, so I think we're all right. But just in brief, um, the environmental NGOs lost, uh, a court case that was important to them where, uh, they felt that the regional water board was going too easy on all of us and letting us backslide. So, um, all of a sudden out of nowhere, I started getting bunches of emails informing me about this piece of legislation, which would require all, uh, surface water in California to be drinkable, swimmable and fishable by 2050. And they'd start finding us somewhere around 2030. Um, it, a- as I've said to, um, a couple of our legislators, if this legislation was passed and came immediately with $30 billion for Los Angeles, we might be able to get close, but I don't know about the drinkable part. Um, so there, it, there's just no question, this is outrageous. It's unthinkable. It's aspirational, but, you know, really, I wish I could fly, but, oh, well. Um, so next meeting, um, we'll agenda is to give you more details, but be on the lookout. It's a, a real stink bomb. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Gloria. Appreciate you keeping an eye on that. Uh, Mr. Blackburn?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Spicer?
No, Mayor, no report for me.
Thank you. Mr. Chevlin?
Yes, thank you. And I do have a couple of items listed on, on the agenda under my reports, and I have to admit, and, uh, Alice and I were going back and forth and I was out of town, a lot of driving involved in the last several days, but at any rate, um, part of what I was going to report on, it is included in the attachment, but the title is different. So, uh, Craig, I don't know if I'm good, good to go. Am I okay? It's actually included in the attachment, but the title on the agenda is different. You're, you're, oh, there you go.
What, what is, what would be the correct?
Well, there were, there were, um, and I can, it actually is kind of a, a good reminder. The first one has to do with, uh, the COG Delegate to the Sangable Mountains Community Collaborative, and that's, there's kind of a reminder involved there, but the one I wanted was right behind it, and it was, uh, Fighting Homelessness Through Services and Housing Act, and it's, uh, to adopt a resolution in support of Fighting Homelessness Through Services and Housing Act proposed by Senator Dianne Feinstein. So that's, the, I was looking for a direction on that.
Becky, that was in your attachment.
Exactly. It's in the attachment, but it just, it wasn't in the, in the agenda.
Yeah. Is, is there a need to take action before the next meeting?
Yeah, mhm.
Well, then you could, uh, if the council is so inclined, by four-fifth vote, add it to the, um, agenda.
Do I have your consent to do so, fellow colleagues?
Oh, what's, do you need a motion? We'll put it on the agenda.
I think Councilwoman Chevlin made the motion. She would need to say it.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to add this item to the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did, did you call for my vote? I didn't hear.
Yes, there's a motion, um, and second to add an item for Becky's report.
Right, yes. I, I vote in favor of the motion. I didn't hear you call for my vote.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Chevlin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crudgington?
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes. Okay, so that is now included with our agenda.
Okay, great. I did want to bring attention, uh, to, um, and I had talked about this last, um, meeting, and it was a, a part of our, uh, consent calendar this evening, and that was the city, uh, actually approving, um, the Sangable Valley Council of Governments White Paper, um, on Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority Reform. And so that was our item CC6, so I thank you for that, and hopefully we will be able to improve our, our relationship, uh, with Los and have, get more things done. Um, but under my agenda item, then the one that was listed, uh, originally listed, then it has to do with the Sangable Valley, uh, COG Delegate to the Sangable Mountains Community Collaborative. And the reason I say this is kind of a good reminder is that last year, um, for those of you that remember, uh, it came back, Judy Chu brought back a piece of legislation regarding the wilderness designations proposed for 30,200 acres in the western Sangable Mountains, and this is an expansion of the National Recreation Area National Monument. And as, if you remember, Monrovia was, um, very much opposed as to inclusion of the city of Monrovia within the city limits. So at any rate, that's, we need to keep that on our, our radar because apparently it is coming back, but as long as it's on the agenda, I just will mention that it's proposed that Jennifer Stark, um, from the city of Claremont, their council member, be placed as the COGS representative, um, on this, uh, collaborative. Um, so I just wanted to, it's actually the title of it, excuse me, um, Sangable Mountains Community Collaborative. So I don't think any of you would have any objections to that, other than, like I said, it's a good reminder to keep that piece of legis- federal legislation, um, in mind and keep an eye on it to see where it is going. Uh, on the one, though, that you just voted for, the, um, Fighting Homelessness Through Services and Housing Act, that is being brought forward by Senator Dianne Feinstein, and it, the bill would provide $1 billion per year available through a competitive process administered, uh, by the Health Resources and Services Administration. Grants of up to 25 million would be available to government agencies at the county, city, regional or, um, local levels, uh, or to Indian tribe and tribal organizations. Uh, it is anticipated that the COG and the Sangable Valley Regional Housing Trust would both be eligible under this definition. Uh, actually the city would also, so at any rate, I wanted, um, your support in voting to recommend, um, support of that piece of legislation, and...
So moved.
Do we have to, can we do it by, can we do it by motion or consensus? Can't you hear me, Craig?
You're on mute.
I think in the past, we've, uh, always done legislation by vote, so.
Okay, all right.
You have a motion and...
And, and a second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn?
Yes.
Chevlin?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crudgington?
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Um, I did also include on there just, um, briefly, some updates, uh, from the COG, and, uh, in our agenda for this Thursday, we have a, a long list of, um, members to appoint to, uh, standing COG policy committees. Uh, I will note that the COG is also joining the California Association of Councils of Governments, which we had not been a member of in the past. Um, Margaret Clark as the, um, president will be the main delegate, and I, um, first vice president will be the alternate. Um, we have, uh, appointments to Sangable Val- Sangable and Lower Los Angeles Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. Um, that's some, a council member from El Monte, Victoria Martinez Muella. Sangable Valley Regional Housing Trust, uh, Board Direct, uh, Board of Directors, we're filling some seats on that. Central Seat, Maria Morales El Monte. Emmanuel Estrada Baldwin Park, uh, as an alternate in housing and homeless expert, Carol Avril from, um, Baldwin Park. Planning Directors, Technical Advisory Committee, and on several of these committees, um, you'll note that the City of Pasadena has been, uh, designated, they have now rejoined the, the COG, so we're glad to have them on board. Um, and that's, City of Pasadena Public Works Technical Advisory Board, Energy, Environmental and Resources, uh, Homeless Committee, Transportation Committee, uh, and also for the Transportation Committee, City of Alhambra and Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, District Four, and the Water Technical Advisory Committee, also the City of Pasadena. So, um, at any rate, uh, then, I wanted to give you some very good news. If you hadn't already heard it, it's been broadcast, um, quite broadly, and that is the, the Regional Housing Trust had, uh, placed a grant, applied for a grant, and the state awards funds for construction of 71 units of low-income housing in San And the state awards funds for construction of seventy-one units of low-income housing in Sangable Valley has been awarded to the, uh, trust. Um, this was dated Jan, oh, excuse me, February tenth. Um, Sangable Valley officials today announced the Sen, uh, State of California has awarded grant funds for construction of affordable housing developments in the cities of Claremont and Pomona. The award of one million in state grant funds is being matched by an equal amount of local funds provided by the newly established Sangable, uh, Valley Regional Housing Trust, completing the project budgets, so that two housing developments can start construction on schedule in twenty twenty-one. The Pomona project has fifty-six units and, um, the, uh, Claremont has fifteen. And again, the Housing Trust doesn't build projects, but they provide, um, gap funding on the Pomona, uh, project. It provided one point three five million and in the, um, Claremont one, uh, five hundred thousand. Um, so at any rate, this is a, a great start, we leveraged our money. And we're able to, um, get some projects, very important projects going in the region. And hopefully, Monrovia sometime soon will be able to propose a project to get into that pipeline as well. But this is a great start to our new housing trust. And we're very excited to be able to, um, provide the funds needed to get these projects off the ground. And again, so many times these projects, that's what kills them. They just need that little bit of gap funding to make them possible, and we are so delighted to make that happen. So, that is my report, and thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you Becky, appreciate it.
Welcome.
Uh, I don't have a real report for this evening, but another reminder on wearing your masks, please. Um, also a reminder that we're still in a drought. I think we're about two feet of water in the Sangable Valley below the point that the water master feels is a safe level. So whatever we can all do to try to conserve water, uh, will be the, the beneficiary of that, so thank you. And going back to Becky's item on the Sangable Mountains Community, this council's always been against the legislation, uh, involving the Sangable Mountains, simply for one reason and one reason only. The line, when you look at the map, encroaches into people's yards and encroaches into some people's houses. And we have asked repeatedly for Congress to move the line. Uh, we're, we're very much in favor of protecting our mountains. We've never been in favor of putting the federal government in charge of people's living rooms or backyards. So, uh, we will continue on that path. And I've never had anybody explain to me why it was such a challenge to move the line on the map so that it doesn't encroach into people's living rooms. But that's the position we've held for many years, and I suspect we will continue to.
Um, can, can I just expand on that just a little bit? And Gloria, maybe in the future, will have something to say about this too? Because the, the current version of this additional legislation also includes rivers, what, what they deem as wild, uh, rivers. Um, I've forgotten the exact title on that as it pertains to the water portion of it. But it, it's, it expands the, uh, designation quite a bit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on now to, um, our administrative reports, AR one, of fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, comprehensive report. Buffy Bullis, welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank, thank you, uh, good evening Mayor Adams and members of the city council.
And your, your microphone is a little scratchy, you, you may have borrowed John's microphone.
Is that a little better?
That's a lot better.
Okay, great.
Thank you, sounds more like you.
Okay, um, so the, the item before you this evening is the nineteen twenty CAFR. Um, Brian Gruber, the audit manager for our nineteen twenty audit is here this evening. And we'll be going over the audit with you, but before I turn it over to Brian, I wanted to go over a few slides and a few discussion items with you this evening. So each year, the city undergoes an annual audit, which is done by an independent CPA firm. The auditors come in, they review our internal controls, our procedures, our compliance with policies, and our accounting records. And then, once the audit is complete, we then prepare the CAFR. For the nineteen twenty audit, the city received an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit. And that's the highest audit result that we can achieve. And this means that our financial statements conform with all reporting requirements. And for this year's audit, no audit findings were reported by the auditors. So our CAFR meets the highest standards of financial reporting. We've received the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the past twenty-six years. And we submitted our CAFR for nineteen twenty as well for this year. And the audit committee is an important part of the audit. The auditors met with the audit committee, uh, when the audit started. And then again, when the audit was completed, to go over the CAFR draft and then to review the audit results. The audit committee can also contact the auditors at any time during the audit and ask questions or have inquiries. And Mayor Protem Crudginton and Councilmember Blackburn served on the audit committee for the nineteen twenty audit. And for next year's audit, Mayor Protem Crudginton and Councilmember Spicer will be the audit committee's representatives. And the CAFR has three main sections, and each section serves a specific purpose. Um, the introductory section, uh, includes extra information to help supplement the financial section of the CAFR. The second main section is the financial section, it includes the independent auditor's report, um, the management's discussion and analysis, the financial statements in the footnotes. And then the statistical section is the final section, and it provides supplemental data, such as financial trend and demographic data. So I wanted to quickly review the financial condition of the city at June thirtieth of twenty twenty. So as you know, nineteen twenty was a unique and unprecedented year because of COVID. And leading up to the pandemic, the economy was experiencing the longest period of economic growth in U.S. history. However, when the pandemic hit, uh, we were originally projecting a loss of revenues of over two point six million in the general fund. But because we were able to make quick decisions, we were able to implement cost-saving me, measures to help offset our shortfall in revenues. And once we were able to successfully navigate the impacts of COVID, we were able to end the year better than expected. Citywide, we were able to add eight point two three million in additional capital assets to our capital asset inventory. Um, but overall, the city ended in a negative net position of eleven point seven eight million. And this was a decrease of one point seven six million from the prior year. And as council will recall, net position includes all of our assets less our liabilities. So we had more liabilities than assets. Um, but as council will also recall, we, our net position has been significantly impacted by two GASB pronouncements over the last several years. And those are GASB sixty-eight and GASB seventy-five. And together, those both added over a hundred million of debt to our financial statements upon their implementation. So increasing our net position and reserves, it continues to be a focus of our budget cycles. And on this slide, I wanted to add some context to our negative net position. So GAAP accounting standards are based on a conservative approach to financial reporting. So for example, GAAP requires that we include all future liabilities in our financial statements. But we do not include any of the future revenues that are dedicated to pay those liabilities. And really, this is an important consideration when looking at our net position. So for the city of Monrovia, we have five different bond issues that have been approved. And there are dedicated revenue sources to repay those bond issues. So of our total two hundred and twenty-six million in liabilities on our CAFR, a hundred and sixty-nine million has a dedicated revenue source to secure, that's secured for its repayment. And this really should be considered when reviewing the CAFR and the overall net position, it's really an important consideration. And while the CAFR provides useful information as of June thirtieth, the numbers do not necessarily reflect all the positive measures that city council has implemented over the last several years. So I wanted to go over a few of those, uh, this evening. Some of the examples, as we've discussed before, are the CALPERS Response Plan, also known as the CPR Plan. Um, this included a, an employee, PERS Employee Give Back Program, and then also an increase in the TOT rate. Both of these are reflected in the CAFR, so those have been completed. It also included refinancing our pension debt from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate. Um, that's expected to save us about forty-three million over thirty years, and that's not yet reflected in the CAFR. Um, and the CPR Plan also included the development of a UAL policy to help manage the UAL ball, the UAL balance. And we'll see that in future years. And then council also approved a financial resiliency plan and, that will help to protect general fund dollars and build up reserve levels. And this has been included in recent budgets, and then will also be the basis for our future budgets as well.
Can I add one thing? Could you go back one slide, Buffy?
Yes.
It struck me this year, um, that, um, the, the line that says, um, though this is all PERS, well, where, wherever the line is about, um, the, all of the, um, restoration we've done on the streets and the pipes and the sidewalks, there is a dedicated, uh, in, income flow to cover all of that, um, renewal work, right?
Yeah, so we, we would be looking at, um, two of the bond measures here. Uh, we would be looking at the measure R and Prop C, street improvement lease revenue bonds. And then also the twenty sixteen water and sewer revenue bonds. So both of those bonds help to fund that infrastructure work. And then we have a dedicated revenue stream to pay for the debt service on those each year in the future.
But since it's come up from time to time that we've got a lot of indebtedness, I noticed this year for the first time, looking at these figures, that our accounting procedures actually encourage deferred maintenance. You look like you're going into the hole when you're actually repairing and fixing your streets, regardless of, if you have the money to pay for it.
Well, I think what it shows is that, um, you, you don't necessarily see what's behind the scenes. Um, what, what the reader will see is the debt on the books. Um, but, you know, without reading the footnotes or the additional information that's included in the CAFR, they might not understand what that entails and, and what it was issued for.
But they, but they would understand if they were driving over another city's rough roads and having, uh, a water leak every week or two.
Yes, definitely, um, they would notice the improvements that we made that wouldn't be made in the, you know, a nearby city.
But they don't see it automatically, just looking at the financial report.
Uh, that's correct, that's very true, it's a really good point.
Okay, just wanted to grind that ax a little bit before you went on.
That's a really good point. Okay. Okay, and then additionally, some of the other initiatives, uh, the approval of Measure K, which will bring in about four and a half to five million each year. And council has committed to use reserves, the revenues from Measure K to build reserves and invest in infrastructure. And then, uh, an approval of a five-year water rate increase, uh, three years are included in this CAFR. Um, but we still have two years, uh, to go on that, so we see, we'll see that, uh, benefit in future years. And then the establishment of a Section one fifteen trust to set aside funds for pension and OPEB liabilities. As councils aware, five hundred thousand has been set aside in this current fiscal year, not nineteen twenty, but this current fiscal year, um, towards that effort. And then in terms of future initiatives, uh, staff is currently working on developing a pension and OPEB payoff plan, uh, which will look to use future increases in the redevelopment, redevelopment property tax revenues and the Section one fifteen trust to help manage and pay down pension and OPEB liabilities. And then also, we're currently looking at performing a comprehensive asset valuation and inventory assessment to ensure that we're, uh, accounting for all of our capital assets. And this is expected to possibly improve our net position. So all of these measures together will help to move the city in the right direction in terms of finances. And we do have some good news, the city moved from number ten in sixteen seventeen to number twenty-one in eighteen nineteen on the California State Auditor's List of Cities Facing Fiscal Challenges. Um, so we're incrementally getting better. And this really does illustrate the city's continued effort to implement sound financial management practices. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Gruber, uh, from Lancel and Lunghard. And he, he'll be discussing the audit and the CAFR with you.
Perfect, uh, thank you Buffy for that thorough report. Uh, good evening Mayor, members of city council. My name is Brian Gruber again with LSL, Lancel and Lunghard. Uh, the independent auditor that was engaged by the city to conduct a financial statement audit for this CAFR, this fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty. Uh, the purpose of a, of an independent financial audit is the expression of an opinion on the financial statements that have been provided to you. Uh, the opinion that the information in those financial statements is properly stated in all material respects and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, in order for us to render our opinion, we go through a series of, uh, tests and, and processes complying with professional standards by the AICPA for conducting our audit, uh, which involves, uh, a series of steps. Uh, we have rendered an opinion, as, as Buffy indicated in the report. Um, we express what's referred to as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And ultimately, what you would look to receive when, um, undergoing a financial statement audit. Uh, and, and it basically means that the financial statements have been audited and, and can be relied upon by, by users and, and readers of the financial statements. In conjunction with the, uh, independent auditor's report, there's two additional communication letters, which are required by governmental auditing standards, um, which we're required to communicate to the city council. Any deficiencies that we might identify in the, in the audit that are deemed to be a, a significant deficiency or a material weakness in internal control. Uh, we, we reported no, no, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. In addition, uh, we're required to communicate if we identify instances of non-compliance with, with, um, you know, various laws and regulations, granted, grant awards, agreements and contracts. Uh, we, we noted no instances of non-compliance during our audit. Uh, the, the third piece of communication is what we refer to as our, you know, um, audit, 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 audit letter to, to the city council. Uh, and, and in there, uh, we would, we would communicate to you if we had difficulties conducting our audit, which we had none. If we had disagreements with management, uh, regarding accounting procedure, regarding, um, recognition or reporting in the financial statement, um, we had none. Um, if we had any differences or, or audit corrections, um, that were required to be made to the financial statements, we'd communicate to you, we had none. Um, and, and, and lastly, if there was any changes in, in accounting procedure as a result of, um, accounting standards changes or whatnot, and there were none. Um, there were actually diff, uh, some deferment of accounting standards related to, um, that were postponed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, uh, related to COVID nineteen and, and, and deferred implementation of those. Um, and, and we, we indicated that in our letter as well. Um, that's kind of a, a, a brief summary of our audit process and results. You know, happy to, uh, answer any questions that you might have for, for us, for the auditors.
Thank you Brian, appreciate you being here, uh, any questions for Mr. Gruber?
I don't have a question for me, I just want to think, well, I want to think, but I want to think our audit committee is, as well. And when other cities find out that we have an audit committee, they're very interested, uh, in what that really means. And, um, thank you, great job.
And we do need to thank Gloria and Alex, have been serving on the audit committee for several years now. And, um, we open this up for full transparency. And, uh, it's just a great way of conducting the people's business. But any questions for Mr. Gruber? All right, Brian, well, we appreciate you being here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And I will entertain a motion on the CAFR.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded to receive and file the report. Any other discussion? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crutchington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, and Buffy, thank you to you and your team. Things just keep getting better, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
As usual, you did an outstanding job, Buffy. Thank you, and to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Okay, this concludes our meeting this evening. But we will be adjourning. Monrovia has really suffered a tremendous loss in this past few weeks. This evening, we will be adjourning in the memory of Wayne Nunley, a longtime Monrovia resident, the first African-American college football coach, and a retired defensive line coach for the Denver Broncos. A great guy, just did an amazing job. And if you'll keep his family and your thoughts and prayers, I know they will appreciate that very much. We also lost Cookie Lipman, lifelong resident and wife of Veterans Volunteer Richard McCubbins. And then we've lost Hector Ilizalde. And Hector officially was the Deputy District Director and Military Veterans Liaison to Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, Chair of the Los Angeles County Veterans Advisor Advisory Commission, longtime Monrovia resident. And just, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I've said it before. If you open up the encyclopedia to, to Public Servant, it's going to have Hector's picture there.
Yeah.
Hector was just an amazing, amazing individual. Served the veterans community in particular, across the valley. Is going to be missed terribly so. I know the Congresswoman is missing him already on her staff. And if you would keep Eddie Ilizalde and the balance of their family in your thoughts and prayers, I know they will appreciate that very much. It's just, all three of these individuals is just a terrible loss. But we are adjourning this evening in their memory. And we will be back here on Tuesday, March second, at seven thirty. Thank you all for coming this evening, and we appreciate your attendance. Thank you.
Happy birthday again, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Happy birth.